Call to order the meeting of Monday, October the 10th. And if the clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the previous meeting of September the 26th before you. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as they were submitted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have one presentation tonight. The clerk would read that, please.
Jim Fisher, Chairman of the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission, will speak about the proposed Downtown Transit Center.
Different from this side. I think Jim can get me going there. We're trying something different here. Look at that. Just like my mind. Potentially left blank. All right. There we go. So yeah, what I'm here to talk about tonight is the proposed Transit Center from Blue Water Area Transit. Probably one of the worst-kept secrets in town. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna answer kind of the five W's as we go through this. So we're gonna start with who. And I apologize, some of you are gonna know a lot of this information, but I doubt if everyone here is gonna know all this information. So we'll kinda go over some stuff. But who? Who is Blue Water Area Transit? Well, we just celebrated our 35th anniversary. And in that 35 years, we've carried over 20 million passengers. We have an annual operating budget of $10 million. Our annual capital budget is $4 million. And our fleet is run mostly by, just about all, by Semco Natural Gas, of course, local company there. But let's talk about natural gas real quick for a second and what that really means. We actually have Michigan's largest natural gas fleet. Natural gas allows us to have a 95% reduction in particulates, a 90% reduction of noxious gases, a 21% reduction in other greenhouse gases, and it's also United States fuel. Now, natural gas, our buses are probably cleaner than most people's SUVs. So they're a very clean and safe-for-the-environment vehicle. So what? What is a transfer center? I've heard a lot of people talk about a lot of different things. And a transfer center is not a garage, it's not a repair station. But the best thing to do is to look at what some other communities have done. Charlotte, North Carolina, this is their Downtown Transportation Center. Now, it's a very attractive building, was actually designed and built to be reminiscent of old-world train stations, European train stations. This opened in 1995. And since 1995, the crime rate in Charlotte, North Carolina has gone up. But ironically, or actually by plan, crime rates around the center have actually decreased. Now, this facility is designed as a multipurpose facility. There's six fast-food restaurants, a walk-in medical clinic, and a post office. And this is a little more than just a place where you change buses. Nashville, Tennessee, they're Music City Central. It's open in 2008, incorporates public restrooms for the area. Of course, it matches their music theme in Nashville, has a parking garage for 428 vehicles, has retail space, including Dunkin' Donuts and the Music City Market. And under construction right now in Beckley, West Virginia is the Beckley Intermodal Gateway. Now, this is scheduled to open in late 2011, has parking for 368 vehicles, and incorporates a public plaza for Friday in the park. It's real similar to our Rockin' the Rivers concerts. Their farmer's market, chili night, and other special events. You can see the public plaza right in that bottom photo there. And it's being constructed right in the heart of Beckley's downtown area. And they're planning on this being the center, the gateway into their city. So I did this presentation earlier, and that's what somebody brought up, that we really aren't Beckley, West Virginia, we're not Charlotte, we're not Nashville, we're not Corpus Christi. Be kinda cool to be Ventura, California. That's a sculpture called Bus House that they did there at one of their transfer centers. But the question is, we're Port Huron, but are we normal? Well, let's examine that. By Normal, Illinois. This is their multimodal transportation center. There it goes. Normal's population, about 52,500. This is scheduled to open next year in 2012. It's a 68,000-square-foot four-story structure with a food court, an information center, and plus, they've included retail space. The top three floors of the main structure house city offices and the council chambers. And again, this is designed to be the centerpiece of Normal's uptown plan. The bottom photo is construction as of about a week ago. Kent, Ohio. Now, Kent, Ohio is about the size of Port Huron. So it's kinda fun to look more at that, a city about like us. This is their Kent, the Kent Central Great Gateway. And another view. Kent's population, 28,904, according to the 2010 census. This is a 325,000-square-foot project that combines a bus transfer station with public parking, retail and commercial space, pedestrian and bicycle connections to make it a true intermodal gateway. Scheduled to open, as I said, in 2012. And this gateway is designed to be the centerpiece of Kent's downtown redevelopment. More and more communities are beginning to realize that it's transportation that is the center, that is the hub of a community's downtown. In fact, I've got a photo here, or a drawing, of their concept of their downtown development plan, including their hotel and conference center, Main Street restoration, a News County courthouse, and the multimodal center. And you talk about the multimodal center, it's exactly that. Right in the center, right in the heart of their downtown to provide the impetus and the growth for that area. So why? Why do we need such a facility here in our community? Why does Port Huron need such a facility? Well, the first thing to look at is the growth of the Blue Water Area Transit Company. 2004, we carried a little over a half a million passengers a year. 2010, we were just shy of 860,000, and that trend still continues and grows. More and more people are riding public transit and realizing the value of public transportation. It's been asked, how does this fit in with Port Huron's master plan? Well, listed explicitly right in the commercial district's goals and objectives. Goal number three. Downtown Port Huron will continue to develop and thrive as the focal point for city development and activity, the downtown we need to focus on for investment in our community. Point four. Downtown Port Huron will offer a walkable, livable environment that is a desirable place to shop, work, live, and play. And that's what we're trying to do, is to help make this a walkable and livable environment. Point five. All other key areas of the city will be linked to the downtown area to unify the assets and generate more activity where desired. And again, it's the linkages that provide the opportunities for growth. Page 35 of the master plan specifically mentions the South McMorn parking lot. South of the McMorn complex, there are two city blocks occupied by a large surface parking lot. This open lot creates a void in the building wall that lines McMorn Boulevard. This parking lot should be evaluated for redevelopment opportunities that will complete the building wall and address the potential for additional parking, retail, and/or residential uses. In the master plan, under the economic development goals and objectives, goal number four. Year-round tourism activities and destinations at Port Huron will continue to be an important component to the city's economy. We need to enhance the linkages to key destinations for visitors, such as the waterfront, the museums, and cultural destinations. And again, that's what we're proposing, is a way to enhance the linkages for our visitors to travel to the various areas. In our master plan about the transportation goals and objectives, goal number three talks about the city's multimodal transportation system will be unified throughout the city to offer residents and visitors safe and enjoyable transportation alternatives. So some of the objectives listed for the transportation goals and objectives in our own master plans, to facilitate coordination between different transportation agencies, to create a transportation systems plan that illustrates the links between the pathways, buses, trains, automobiles, and watercraft, provide stations for modal transfers and other regional modes of transportation, such as bus, passenger rail, or watercraft. Link all key areas of the city with all modes of transportation. Incorporate regional connections to the system. Increase and improve efforts towards waterway transportation. And continue to offer an efficient and comprehensive public transportation system. Some of the goals I've always heard talked about downtown that's mentioned over and over and over, things that they want and need to help succeed. Number one, coming up on the list, is always public restrooms. An increase in pedestrian traffic. Help to sustain downtown businesses. Integrate the college with the downtown. Most colleges, the college, most college towns, the college kids just seem to flow into the downtown. And with that sea of asphalt we have, it creates a barrier to doing that. And events to bring people downtown. Now, how in the world could a transfer center bring events downtown and bring people downtown? Well, in Akron, Ohio, their Downtown Transit Center, every year hosts an event. Their Traffic Jam. And the Traffic Jam is a music concert that's put on right at the transfer center, and offers activities both inside and out. Food vendors are available. Activities for seniors and crafts. Even bouncy toys for kids during the Traffic Jam. And of course, music. And then fun things for kids. Local artisans are incorporated also. Someone asked once that they, why a transit center should be located anywhere near any kind of a public arena. Well, Sacramento, California, this is what they're doing right now. This is their new Kings complex and their Intermodal Transfer Center. The new arena for the Kings is on the left-hand side of those images, and their Intermodal Transfer Center is on the right to help bring people and provide transportation both to and from the Kings games. And they looked at doing this, reported in the Sacramento press, said Sacramento officials believe a new arena can be integrated with a future regional transit center in historic downtown rail yards. It's an area they're looking to revitalize. And they look at making this one of the country's most eco-friendly sports and entertainment facilities. Their Assistant City Manager went on to say that they can integrate these two, and they have an opportunity to create one of the most sustainable, green, interesting entertainment and sports facilities in the country. The Urban Land Institute was consulted as part of this to make sure their plan would work. And they said that the Intermodal Transit Facilities and Sports Complex can be accommodated in a symbiotic way that creates public space, provides connectivity, and achieves synergies with surrounding districts. This is our current transfer area. So this is what boaters are greeted with, actually, when they come up. The buses have to line up along Quay Street, removing parking from that side of the street or vehicular traffic from that side of the street. If a vehicle comes up, if they're traveling to the eastbound, they've gotta go around the buses, cutting down to one lane of traffic. And when the buses leave, they also encroach on the lane of traffic. By removing them from the street, it makes that street a safer place to walk or drive, helps support the businesses on that street, and has a potential to provide more parking right in that area. So where? And I've already spoken to that, and of course, that's already been reported. We're looking at the McMorn South Lot. This area right here. This is one of the concepts which we brought forth and proposed. So basically, we would build a transfer center there to support the bus traffic to replace the parking for McMorn Boulevard. We're proposing a four-story parking deck, could be more, could be less. But there'd be 500 spaces available, or 80 more than are available right now in the McMorn lot to help support activities and events going on in McMorn. The west side could all become a public park and green space available to help draw the college students in, to make it a more attractive area, to remove that sea of asphalt that seems to block college students from wanting to walk across there, something very uninviting. Up near the top and along McMorn Avenue, some of you may be able to see the number eight. And if you look, it talks about future development. That area would be available for future development, retail or otherwise, to provide a taxpaying entity for this area. Oh, there'd be public restrooms in there also. And we're proposing free public Wi-Fi over that whole area to help provide a meeting and gathering place. The park could be a place for any kind of events, for an art show or any other event that we're doing in the city, or even a traffic jam. I like that. I also read, or heard on the radio, actually, that the DDA has a proposal, so we're looking at two different proposals. In my mind, in looking at these, they aren't really two different proposals. It's something very, very similar, and actually, can be merged together very, very well. If we zoom in at what they're talking about for the McMorn area to help pedestrianize that a little more, if we look on the right-hand side, that is a transit center proposed by the DDA to go right in the exact space that we're proposing. $160,000. You may have read that McMorn is gonna lose money from parking revenues. So the actual figure that I got was $160,000. That's the take from the tickets in the McMorn on the south parking lot, which is where we're talking about. But let's look at the south parking lot. Let's see what's going on there and the conditions. Right now, we have some overgrown greenery that's coming out. We've got trees growing and escaping from their areas. The brick walkways are breaking, moss-filled, and definitely need some repair and work. In fact, just a couple days ago, I noticed that they're being torn out in front of the college and being, something's being done. There's sawhorses up there to keep people from stepping in them. Some of the grates along there are in pretty bad shape. This one's broken, and there's been some road tire crammed in there to help keep it from shifting for pedestrians walking through. This area has all been sunk down and dipped. You can see where it's been patched. And in fact, if that sinks any further, any cars that park there are gonna be dragging their bumpers right on that curb. There we go. We've got a handicap sign there that's a little hard to see due to the brush overgrowth. The sidewalks are all in pretty bad repair also. That's about a two-inch raise in that, a potential trip hazard. Cracked and broken. So the parking lot's in pretty bad shape. Now, we talked about $160,000 if McMorn receives out the parking lot. But as most businesses know, or most business owners know, you can't just count gross receipts, you've gotta look at your expenses. So what are the expenses to run the South McMorn parking lot? There's an annual snow removal cost of about $3,000 a year to have it plowed. The sweeping, to keep the gravel and debris out, $21,840. Annual maintenance for the trimming, estimated at $4,500. Pothole repair annually, $6,000. Street lighting, our electric bill in that area, $5,500. Booth labor, there's gotta be somebody there to operate those ticket booths. So I estimate it about $16,000 a year. All the other numbers are direct from McMorn. Total expenses on this lot, $56,840 annually that are directly coming off that $160,000. But there's other things going on. Estimated $275,000 to repair the bricks that are broken in the walkway areas. $450,000 to repave the lot. $17,500 to fix the sidewalks, remove the trip hazards. You add those up, you've got $742,500 in needed repairs to the McMorn lot. Now, you can't include that in annual budget, so I just amortize that over 10 years. So an annual expense of $74,250. A sinking fund, if you will, money set aside for future repairs and maintenance. I mean, either you can set the money aside first, or you can borrow it later. But it's, the bill's gotta be paid. So the true annual cost of the McMorn parking lot is $131,090 with gross receipts of $160,000. That's a net profit of $28,910. That's the true income of McMorn off that south parking lot, about $29,000. How? How can we build such a facility? Because we're looking at quite a bit of money to build such a thing. Well, through a little thing known as the, actually, it's a big thing, the Transportation Income Generating Economic Recovery Grants, or Tiger Grants from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Blue Water Area Transit has these available to us because we're a transit authority. Grants like this are not available to most municipalities unless they're a transit authority. So what are we looking at doing? $10 million in a federal grant is what we'll be applying for. That'll be matched by $2,600,000 from the state. Blue Water Area Transit will kick in, a little over $650,000. We're looking at about a 13 and a half-million-dollar project in the heart of our downtown. Let me just say this again. With a transit center, and again, this is a conceptual design, public input will still happen as far as what the transfer center looks like and the parking deck and all the amenities. But what we propose to do is to build and maintain the transfer center at no cost to the city. Build and maintain the parking deck at no cost to the city. Build and maintain public restrooms. All of these to support the merchants downtown, and again, at no cost to the city. We will also build and maintain a public green space, provide public Wi-Fi, so to provide a gathering area for students, for visitors, for tourists, for boaters into our community closer to the heart of our downtown and closer to our merchants. When? That's the crux of the thing. We have a deadline of October 25th to apply for this grant. There's been Tiger 1, Tiger 2, and this round is Tiger 3 grants. And right now, there are no appropriations for any future Tiger Grants. This is our one shot. If we miss this opportunity, I don't think it's gonna come around again. And I got thinking about water, and I got thinking about our area and the blue water and how clean and how pretty it is. Well, one of the reasons our water is so pure right there is that it's always under motion, it's always changing. Change helps bring desirable things. If you have water that's not in motion, water that doesn't change, this is what you get. And oftentimes, this is what I feel, because we've got so many opportunities, but we're so afraid to make that step and to do something and to change. This is not how I want our community to look. I wanna see some change, I wanna see some development, I wanna see some clarity, and something more inviting. So basically, we have a choice in our community. We can greet and have people have a transfer center that looks something like this, or maybe something that looks like this. People exiting McMorn can be greeted with a parking lot that looks like this, or maybe something that looks like this. Again, to help support retail and business in that area. Boaters or students looking across McMorn South Parking Lot or any of us here in our own community, would you rather have this in the center of our downtown? Or maybe something that looked like this? Folks, this is what we're proposing. This is not simply a garage, it is not a bus station. This is truly a centerpiece for our community to help provide support for McMorn, support for our downtown retail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. For the audience's benefit, we will be having a special council meeting next Monday night at 7:00 PM. And it will be a public hearing to hear the public's comments on this proposal. And at that time, then, there'll be a resolution before us as to whether the, to consider to, whether the council is going to support this project or not. So if you have any input and want to come and speak next Monday night, please do so. We'll move on now to public hearings.
Number one is to hear comments on approval of an obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act exemption for the property located in the Sperry's Building, Oprah District, at 301 Huron Avenue for a period of six years. Following the public hearing, council will give consideration to approving the resolution to grant the exemption.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Council on Public Hearing Number One?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna Klum. And as Vice Chair of the Groundfield Authority, if that hasn't been changed, I would request Mayor Rep. an update on the Sperry's project, maybe put forth a committee to get the latest changes and things that are going on. We haven't had a meeting for quite some time, and I think we need to get up to speed.
Well, just for your information, we actually did have an announcement just a little bit earlier prior to this meeting. And the gentlemen from Sperry's Landmark Incorporated are here in the audience tonight, and I believe they're gonna get up during the public hearing portion to update everyone. And maybe they would like to follow you and come up now before we ask anybody else. Okay?
All right.
Hello, I'm Tom Johnson with Landmark Development. Good to be back once again.
Dave White, Landmark Development.
The update today is a real milestone event for us. We came here to make the announcement earlier today because as of 4:45 on Friday, we were able to close on the purchase of the building. It's a building we had under option, but we worked very closely with the seller and a number of other parties to remove a lien that was on the property that held us up for about eight months. Now, we're in a position where we own the property. We have all of our financing is raised, a total of $12 million for the project. We're very excited about that, and we're ready to move forward with the, some of the construction work, which we're gonna be breaking ground on in the next couple of weeks. And we're in a position now where we can aggressively pursue tenants. We had a number of interested parties in the last several months. We had to wait till we had possession of the building before we could make firm commitments. So we're at a great turning point, and we're real excited and real happy to be here. The Oprah is a very important part of this. It helps make the project more economically feasible. And we appreciate the council's former support of the project over the last two years. And hopefully, they have it going forward from this point on as well.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Council on this public hearing?
Anthony America, Port Huron. I see we finally got our aquarium. It's at the Sperry's Building. Let them charge admission, and we won't need to give the people's money away. Sometimes I... Sometimes I feel like we're being blackmailed, we gotta give money for people to stay here or do anything good. Whatever happened to the Marina? Whatever happened to Atchison Benzer? Why you seem you already, we're gonna change Port Huron to Port Atchison? Give me a break, that man should be paying his taxes like everybody else, and so should the people that bought the Sperry's Building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ken Harris, fifteen-twenty-one Wells Street, Port Huron. My, my thing is really the questions on this. What are the implications for Port Huron taxpayers on this? I mean, the assessed value of the building, what are they gonna contribute? The other question I have is, how's this gonna affect other real estate property owners? Are they gonna get the same type of breaks that this development might be going? I, I think we're leaning in the right direction, but I, I don't wanna see other life, other people penalized because of something like this. So, until you answer the questions, I don't think we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Did you have another question, Donna?
Yes, if you would, please. I appreciate the gentleman coming tonight and sharing that with us, but I really feel that the Groundfield Authority needs to have a meeting and have that time to ask definitive questions and have a conversation and not, whoops, and not take up everybody's time.
Okay, thank you.
Because the rest of the authority is not here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address this public hearing? Did you wanna say something, Ms. Harmer?
Mayor, council members, forgive me, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but before you go too far, I just wanted to ask for your consideration, there is a, a typo in the resolution that is before you, and that is that there is a request for a period of six years, and the state law actually and in fact asks for a period of twelve years. And the plan that was before you last year that was reviewed and approved as well. I apologize for that, I just wanted to make sure that that was given to you.
Has everyone noted that on their resolution then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the City Council on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Rep., City Council members. In case I can't be here next week, I just want to commend Mr. Fisher on the Blue Water Transit Authority on their hard work, and I totally think you guys should support this. I, I almost believe that maybe it should be in the North Park lot, but either way, that this is a win-win situation for our community, and anybody that's gonna invest eighteen million dollars into our community, we need to, we need to take that when we got the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one? Seeing no one, I declare public hearing number one closed, and we will move on with the resolution, and do I have a motion to grant the exemption?
Someone support.
Councilmember Fisher and Mayor Pro Tem Miller, is there discussion? Yes, Councilmember Fisher.
I guess I'm thrilled, I really wanna commend you guys. It's been a lot of work and a long, long way to get from where you started to where you are in finally closing on the building, and I'm thrilled. And I'm thrilled that somebody actually sees the value of Port Huron, is willing to come here, it's, you're a twelve-million-dollar investment to rehab the building, historic structure, and really create it to be the jewel it used to be in our downtown. So, instead of broken and boarded-up windows, we're gonna have something that looks really nice down there, folks, and another reason to come downtown. Thank you very much.
Is there any?
Very well said, I concur, it's gonna be a real jewel, and I'm just excited you guys are investing in our community, just wanna thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your tenacity in following this through, 'cause I know it's kinda been a hard road to get everything in order, so we're looking forward to seeing what you're going to do. Is there anyone else? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on to public comment, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any other item, either on the agenda or something we have jurisdiction over, can come to the podium at this time? You have four minutes, please give us your name.
Don't start my minutes until I get the suggested.
No, that's fine. We'll give you that time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I hate technology. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I agree with the projects, I think that they are going to be a positive addition to Port Huron, but there's another piece that you need to be thinking about, and that's why I'm here tonight. The following is a letter I was going to send to the Times-Herald, but as many as, as you are aware of, the editorial board will delete whatever you write if they don't agree with you, so I opted to put this in a public record. "To the Mayor, Council, and City Manager, I think any message should have a thesis statement. For this letter, mine would be, when the city of Port Huron rezoned residential areas into a rental zone, a gateway to drugs and truck crime was formed." And I'm going to give you some examples. There are four houses on my side of the block, across the street are three houses. Four of these seven houses have been drug houses. Two have been drug houses more than once. There was a home invasion in one house, and the trauma the young mother experienced was heart-wrenching as her baby was home at the time. More than one family with children have left the area, sacrificing their investment for the safety of their children. Beyond the rezoning, the fact generic letters were not sent out to homeowners informing them of the rezoning angers me. The housing market was up at the time, and we would've had the option to sell without losing our investment. Now, homeowners' choices are to continue to live in the city's slum or lose their life investment. The quality of life is unbearable. Most of the summer I have suffered from sleep deprivation because of a rental house nearby. This is a technique the military use to elicit information from terrorists. It is debilitating. You constantly are awakened, and at a certain point you can't sleep, nor do you want to because the physical and mental agony is in the awakening. Medical professionals agree this is very detrimental to one's health. It does not take a trained eye to see that blight and refusal to comply with city ordinances is a reality. There are rentals the city has been made aware of that seem to get a pass. Common sense would be a follow-up to offending rentals. Trash cans stay on the boulevard, litter which is never picked up ends up on everyone else's yard, and I'm really tired of picking it up. There is no civility from some rentals. I'm tired of listening to the filthy language and listening to what I refer to as auditory pornography, meaning the lyrics and passing vehicles. Renters in some cases have no respect for property rights, they feel the entire block is for their use. This is the reason landlords need to define property lines. Close to my property in the back are three trash cans without lids. The rainwater is not for plants or flowers. You would realize that as soon as you saw the property. It is merely a habitat for mosquitoes capable of breeding disease. Enclosures are built without permits, further devaluing the area and causing stress to homeowners. The Marathon Gas Station is a large contributor to litter in the area. They put in a restaurant to increase their profits and have become one of the largest causes of blight in the area.
Donna, your time is up, if you can kinda just get to the, keep going, do you have a?
It's difficult to surmise, so I can make my point, so I will return in two weeks.
Oh, well, you can, you can wrap through.
It's, it's too lengthy, seriously. It would take a couple of minutes then.
Do you have the letter that we could copy it? And then distribute it to all the council members? You could welcome to come back, too, but if you wouldn't mind leaving a copy of it with the clerk, she'd be happy to copy it for you.
Can she return it to me?
Oh, of course.
Because I didn't.
Yep, not a problem at all.
Okay.
And then that way we can all read it.
All right.
Maybe, can you grab it, Councilmember Ruiz? He can grab it from you, then we'll give it to the clerk, and she can. Okay, we'll continue with public comment then, if someone would like to come forward, give your name, please.
My name is Laura Lee LaCroix, and I'm here to update you on my home on ten-twenty-six Tenth Avenue that is on your unfinished business. Just a brief review, we entered into the work agreement on June twenty-seventh. At the end of July, when the inspector general came out, we had about seventy to seventy-five percent of the work on the outside completed. We spoke with you on August eighth, and I did inform you that my father had been in the hospital. At that point, a week later, my father died. He had no life insurance, so I had to allocate a lot of my building funds to help with his funeral. Three weeks later, my family experienced another tragedy. My mother's last sister passed away. During her funeral, my mother had a stroke, and I'm my mother's only child, so I had to be deferred from my project once again. We continued through working through all of these adversities, and I'm sure many of you have driven by my house, you can't miss the giant blue house on Tenth Avenue. We have continued to work, my team has helped me, they helped me to provide the wake for my father, so that again, they weren't able to work on my home at that moment. They have supported my family, and due to the shortness of the money, we were slowed down on the project. I am a cab driver in this community, and I have stuck with it and with the, it hasn't been very profitable in the last couple of years, I've been doing it for eleven years, and I'm willing to stick it out here in the city of Port Huron and continue to do a job that is needed in transportation. But I'm asking that in somehow, some way, that you can find the compassion to give us more time to complete this house. As you drive by it, it is no longer a blight site, it is one of the best-looking houses on the block. We'll be done with the roofing as of tomorrow. I am working with reasonable roofing and remodeling to come in and help me with the choices in the living room, bedroom area that were loose. They're also working with me to help find an electrical contractor to do the work. Money has been an option through this issue. I have approached banks, because I don't have verifiable steady income, I'm not able to get a loan, I do not have enough equity in the house to get a loan that way. One of the boys that lives with me, my best friend's boy, that will be living in my house with me when it's completed, he volunteered to get the financing, however, he didn't have enough activity on his credit record. We have run into many walls, I've checked with many of the organizations in our city, and I am not able to find any funding, grants, or assistance of any sort. I am a handicapped citizen of this community that is not on disability. I work every week, thirty-six hours a week. The team members that have invested in this also work full-time jobs. We are doing this project to the best of our ability, we have not stopped to grieve for our family members because we do not wanna lose our home. Please consider that we still have had to cover our daily living expenses, I still have to cover a nine-hundred-and-ten-dollar-a-month house payment, escrow payment on this house, and we are trying very hard to continue this work. When I get out of work on Monday morning, I stay up, and I go to the hardware store, and I purchase whatever I'm able to purchase, because my great friends have supported me with my food and such, so that everything that I have made this last three-and-a-half months, every penny that I didn't divert to my father's funeral, has gone into this house. We are working and striving, and our team has stuck together, and we have literally invested blood, sweat, and tears into this project.
Your time is up, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wayne Herbert, and first off, I'd like to apologize for the attire of me and all the rest of our crew. We quit working on our home so that we could come attend this meeting and support my mother. To start with, I know that we are behind on our deadlines, and we're not asking for money, we're not asking for assistance, alls we're asking for is time. We have all invested everything we have, time, money, everything we can think of, everything that we can use, our tools, everything is at the house. We are trying to work on it as fast as we can, as my mother said, we are almost completed with the roofing, the majority of the exterior of the home is completed. Now, during the time that we've been working on this house, like my mother said, we have encountered many setbacks, some of them time, our workers have jobs, and we have to do this in our spare time. We have to pay, be able to pay our rent, our bills, and we live in separate households, so each of us have our own separate finances that we have to attend to before we can invest any money into our home. And like my mother said, another one of the setbacks we ran into is loss, grief. My grandfather passed away on August fifteenth, and after taking the time to give him a proper service and grieve for our loss, we again resumed work, and we found out that my aunt had had a major stroke and had to be hospitalized. Short period after she was hospitalized, on September eighth, she passed away. During the service for my Aunt Marge, my grandma Jenny Bowman had a minor stroke and had to be hospitalized for a short period of time. After we had gotten her out of the hospital, gotten her health back up, we again resumed work on the house. And like I said, we're not asking for money, we're not asking for assistance, alls we are asking for is time. This is our home, this is where I grew up, this is where I learned, this is, it's our home. We've lived there for sixteen years, and we're not asking, like I said, all we want is time, please, just try to put yourself in our shoes. How would you feel if this was your home, the place you grew up? And again, all we want is time, so please, take the time to think about it and consider us for more time to work on the house, we really wanna save our home. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Gamble, I am one of the workers at ten-twenty-six Tenth Ave. I have known the owner of the house, Laura Lee, and her family for quite a few years. They have become my family, too. This house is their home, we all have blood, sweat, and tears into this house. The family has put their time and money into this house so they can move back home. All of the workers are on a volunteer basis, and all of us are amateurs at remodeling, so we don't know them a lot. Working on this house has not been easy, they have had a couple deaths in their immediate family, the owner's father and aunt both passed away, and her mother had a minor stroke. We have had workers get sick, and many of us have been injured while working. The weather has not held up for us, but we worked through the heat and the high winds. You can't do a roof or paint in the rain, and God knows we have had a lot of rain. But all we are asking for is more time to work on this house. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, thank you as always, my name is Darlene Peterson, resides at thirty-seventeen Riverside Drive. Again, thank you very much for all of your time. There's a couple of things that I just wanna say. There is the issue before you tonight on the shelter. I don't profess to know that it is the right thing, the good thing, the right place to have it, I only wanna make aware to a lot of the people in our Blue Water Area that when you see those red and blue boxes, those metal boxes that are pretty obtrusive all throughout our parking lots, I hope you guys know what I'm talking about. Those are not local donations. When people put things, items, clothing in there, those do not stay local. That's a company that, it works out of Chicago, they pay somebody to come and empty them. What they can't use in resale shops, they actually make rags out of, and that's a fact, and those boxes are throughout the United States, it's not just here. So, please, if you have, and I'm saying this to all of our Blue Water Area residents, that if you have items that you'd like to donate, think about donating them straight to Goodwill, Salvation Army, or perhaps taking the effort to drive to this particular shelter, or one of the other shelters. On the parking structure, I, again, I don't know what, I can't profess to know what was the perfect and what is not. I am a big believer in mass transit, I really believe that we need a better way to get from here to there. Our vehicles, our cars, our bridges, they're falling apart, and we as a nation can Our vehicles, our cars, our bridges, they're falling apart and we as a nation can no longer support that. So I do support the fact that we do have busing. Whether that would be the particular spot that we would use, I don't know, because we do spend a lot of time in discussing what to do with McMoran and if there's another building that is extremely large and a four-story or three-story parking structure there, that kind of precludes it from doing anything with the McMoran itself, the arena, the junior arena, anything in that area. So as always, I think that SC4 is a jewel in our community and we always have a hard time parking, all the kids that, that go down there have a hard time parking because the parking lots have been taken up with buildings, which is great because SC4 is I do have a couple of things that I do want to say though, and I appreciate Councilman Fisher's speaking of and promoting the idea of having the center, but we had a welcome center downtown. We, as area residents, paid to remodel and put in that welcome center. That welcome center had public restrooms. It was right on Main Street, which is basically in the heart of what would be our Main Street shopping district. Sadly, that welcome center is no longer even open, it's not used, it's just there. So we had public restrooms and I kind of question why that we would, you know, kind of promote that to build a parking structure because it has public restrooms. And I also want to say, and I'm sorry again to say this, I'm not a negative person and y'all know that, positive, 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 but to say that it, at no cost to our city, every single dime, every dollar that goes into Tiger grant money comes from our city, our townships, our county, our state, every single one of us citizens that pay, any kind of taxes goes straight into any of these grants. And I do want to say also, these folks that were sitting, speaking of in their house, it touched my heart, it really touched my heart greatly and I appreciate the fact that they continue to work and struggle and try to better the home on 10th Avenue. I don't know which one they're talking of, but I do want to say also that I'm very proud of the fact that this young man came and spoke before you folks and in front of the audience, that he had to feel like he had to apologize for how he was attired and God bless him. Thank you very much, council.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council mayor. I know by now you probably think I'm a pain in the butt, but I'd just like to, right here, right now, I think I'd like to thank Mrs. Clune. You know, I've been out hitting the trails lately and all you have to do is look at the 1000 block on Pearl Street, the 1000 block on Miller Street, not one of you would stay there tonight, not one of us, because you'd fear for your life or your property. And other times when I'm doing walking, I, we don't have a very good paper anymore and there's so much that doesn't get in the paper. I was around 17th Street the other day and two people come out and tell me about the shots fired in the 1600 block in Gordon. This is the type of neighborhood you have. I live eight blocks from her, I live four blocks from the other place. The neighborhoods are running, they're not patrolled, and as far as the gas station that she mentioned over on 11th and Lapeer, it's doing everything that she says, it's an attraction for crime and until we clean it up, it's gonna get worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Ellingwood and I'm disabled as far as being able to drive a car, I'm legally blind, there's other people have other disabilities and I'm sure this building will conform to ADA, but the thing being, in a case such as this, you've got people that cannot operate a car because of disability and they need the buses, they need the trains, they need all kinds of means of public transportation that they can get their hands on, there's no other way we can get around it other than our own two feet and we need this center. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Muldowne, AK Johnny Dog, Rawlings, Port Huron, Michigan. I see you gave this Marina an extra year. I, to be honest, I'm a very compassionate man, I'm a man for the people and I think this family that I just heard brought tears to my eyes. I don't know if it brought any tears to your eyes, that's a good question, but I know one thing, I flew my flag high, now ask me why. The skies are blue and my fight is so true. I will lead them to the Valley of Freedom, I will not rest until my mission's complete. Every time they knock me down, I land on my feet, one man, one voice, and I want to be heard. Tell me your story and you'll also be heard. A nation which forgets its defenders, where itself be forgotten. Somewhere in Port Huron, something smells rotten. I'm just trying to make a living and these actions will not be forgiven. I look into a child's eyes, I see life. Dressed as Scooby-Doo, man, the parents are loving it too. The harassment must stop because I'm steady as a rock and I will never give up the fight because I am an American day and night. And as the next mayor for the city of Port Huron, I will be honored and I'm asking everybody to get out there and vote for me because I will be a mayor for the people. And I want to raise a minute on public audience because I do want to hear what people have to say and ask, because their views and opinions are very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council?
Kathleen McCready, 414 14th Street. I just wanted to announce or remind everybody, candidates forum at Harrison Center Thursday night at 6:30. I hope you all can come. And I had a couple of questions, and questions that were posed to me. If the terminal has restaurants, what happens to our local restaurants?
May I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
We're not proposing any retailer restaurants in there, I was giving examples of what some other communities could do. Last thing I want to do is build, and you stopped the time, it's not fair to her, would be to put, there's some vacancies downtown, last thing I would want to do would be to build retail space downtown.
Okay, well, you know, what-ifs, we all live on the edge and what about the North McMoran lot rather than the South McMoran lot? It would seem more amenable, whatever. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Donna for her words and Mr. Harris, they both said what I haven't had the guts to come down here and say. And everything they say, I back up 100% because the Marathon is a problem, Donna has suffered. I can plot out 30 vacant houses at 14th and Varney, it's not getting any better and we feel that we would appreciate the council would think about maybe the what-ifs, the result of something that you would pass as to how it's gonna affect the adjoining homeowners for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you'll find that our police chief and our planning director have been furiously writing all this down, so I think they will look into it. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council under public comment? Declare public comment closed and we will move on with the agenda.